The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the meeting. We'd like to welcome our new Commissioner, Don Bonnegan. And we'll call, we're all present for once. Review agenda for November fourteenth, is there any additions or?
None for me, sir.
It's moved.
And a motion of second to approve agenda, all in favor, so we're saying aye.
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 Passed by all present. Few minutes for October tenth meeting.
Well, I have just a couple of changes I would like to recommend. On page three of eight, the first full paragraph, line four, you're talking about using kidney sticks, those are Kinney Sticks, like Sister Kinney Institute. Other than that, that's my only suggested change for the minutes.
I'm, Mr. Chair, I misplaced my minutes, but there's, there is a, there is a place in there where I supposedly seconded a motion and I would just like that corrected because I wasn't here.
No.
Thinking about it.
Yeah, I was, you're in my, in my thoughts, yes.
Changes, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor, so we're saying aye.
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 All in favor, same side, passed. Number six. Continuation of variance of Tom and Susan Ardaloff. The Wade Park Plant Commission will hold a public hearing, City Hall, Nineteenth Thirteenth Avenue, six thirty or soon after on Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, to hear the following request. Continuation of public hearing, Tom, request of Thomas L. Ardaloff and trust, revocable trust, Susan Ariadoff, revocable trust, on variances from city ordinances five point five six for wind farm on County Road one thirty-seven, public hearing opened at six thirty-three.
Planning Commissioners, those in the audience, anyone watching at home, I think most folks here tonight are familiar with this request. We did review it, starting at the previous September twelfth meeting, a few months back. The, the request was tabled at that point to allow for some potential revisions from the applicant, kind of based on, on feedback that was received at the meeting. And the applicants opted to forego the October meeting as they were continuing to work through potential revisions at that time. I did issue a extension, is allowed under state statute, to give us a little more time to review that, but we will be running up against the deadline for that process at the end of December, so I would strongly encourage the, the Planning Commission to take some form of action tonight, one way or another, as I don't believe we would probably have enough time to really adequately bring this back another time. In the event that action is not taken in the one hundred and twenty days run-up, the request is approved by default, that's the way that, that works. So that would give us enough time, assuming a recommendation of some form tonight, to take it to the, the city council for one of their upcoming early December meetings, ideally the meeting for the fourth, if at all possible. Again, this request has been submitted by Tom and Susie Ardaloff as the property owners with collaboration from Dakota Sun Capital and parcel real estate as co-applicants. The request is being made for several variances from city ordinance section fifty-two point five six solar and wind electric generating facilities to reduce several of the setback requirements on, for that facility. This does not handle the actual interim use permit angle. If these variances would be approved, then at that point, the applicants would have to come forward at some point to make an actual interim use permit application separately. This only gets them to that point of being able to make that application. If it's, if it were to be ultimately denied by the city council, then there's no option to make application at all, so that would be the end of it. The applicants have submitted a revised layout, I'll scroll up a little bit to show the earlier layouts for anyone that may not be familiar with them. Previously, we saw two options for solar facility for the property. One that was pressed more northerly, probably a larger overall facility for the property, kind of a typical rectangular layout for the most part. And then option two was pushed a little bit further south and, and kind of followed the, the tree line of the area that is being sold to the state of Minnesota as part of their SNA program in coordination with Corey Park, but those were the two options that were presented. Based on some of the feedback that was received at the previous meeting, option three, or revision number three, I should say, is what's being brought forth tonight. As you can see, it gets it out of the five hundred foot setback for properties along the eastern side and from the northern side property, kind of at the northwestern corner here, it does get that out of there just barely, but that comes at the expense of pushing it further away to the very near or at the property, to the residential property, to the eastern side. That location, however, does minimize the need for variances from the, the three-quarter mile setback that's also in play. As you can see, this is, this hasn't changed from what was submitted previously, but the red circle delineates the three-quarter mile setback from another solar project, so any one of these options had a, a fair amount of project within that setback radius. But the revisions that you see tonight probably do the best job of minimizing that to some degree. They did also submit additional information regarding a proposed screening elements that could be effectuated for neighboring properties. There's no request with this, with this application to forego any screening requirements as part of the solar standards we do have, we've not put them to the test yet, we've not seen an application for any. But we did revise our landscaping standards for solar projects that they have to have a fifteen-foot buffer incorporated. So this is some example of what those could look like. The actual landscaping and, and buffer aspects would be handled with the, any interim use permit application that would be, would come forward, we're not specifically looking at buffer or birmingham or landscaping tonight, but just wanted to include that as a point of reference. Just a little bit of history for, for anyone that wasn't in attendance previously. We were contacted previously by the applicant partner Dakota Sun Capital regarding interest in the property and advise, and advise of the current ordinance and that a proposal would require significant variances, but staff did express potential openness for consideration that would locate either primarily in areas to minimize the need for variances or even the wetland area on the eastern side, excuse me, western side of the property on the opposite side of County Road one thirty-seven. The revised layout does not change a necessary variance request, it modifies the configuration a bit, but they still need the same variances, it doesn't change those, it's just kind of the manner in which they would be applied. We're basically treating the, the variance request as per the layout, not, not specifying necessarily a foot measurement with them because they, the layouts have been changing, kind of depending on feedback that's been received and they could change again tonight even perhaps. The revised layout that has been submitted relocates the solar array more easterly and southerly and maximizes screening with the existing old growth trees in area, if you remember my previous recommendation for denial based on, on the proposed layout of the time. I did acknowledge that the screening, particularly in, in areas that, where there's old growth trees, is a factor I think was reasonable to consider for variance because a large part of the ordinance is for aesthetic and screening purposes to try and minimize impacts from, from roadways and some of those things and utilizing some of the existing old growth areas seems to be reasonable. Again, though, the revised layout would be located significantly closer to the adjacent residential property to the east, which would necessitate the further setback reduction from what was originally, originally requested down to essentially zero feet. We do require the fifteen-foot minimum landscape buffer, so no actual solar facilities would be located any closer than that to any neighboring property line. The revisions are significant compared to the originally proposed option one and option two, which both placed them more centrally located within the Ardaloff property. The revised layout pushes the project as far as possible from calling, calling your road one thirty-seven visibility, as well as maintaining developable area on the western side of the property, which was not present in either previous option one or option two. It also works to resolve some concerns we had from neighboring properties adjacent to the, adjacent to the parcel regarding visibility from, from their properties. Probably not perfect, but in any case, it's, it seems to be a fair attempt in good faith to try and minimize impacts to some neighboring properties on that side, but when you have a, a number of properties surrounding any property like this, someone's going to see some impact and in this case, it is the, the property more to the east. Part of the adopted solar ordinance references avoiding developable area, which this does achieve to some degree. And the revisions maintain a large swath of developable area on the area of the property nearest one thirty-seven access and the existing city utilities. I would advise that, well, I previously did express a strong prefer, strong preference for use of the existing wetland area on the western side of the County Road one thirty-seven. Wetland area, obviously not ideal for any sort of development, but that same wetland area is also immediately adjacent to County Road one thirty-seven, which wouldn't necessarily be a fantastic location for visibility purposes either, if we're looking to minimize impacts on roadways. We previously included a, a copy of the ordinance for review. Staff would note that specifically to regulate location of solar and wind generating electric facilities within the city of Wade Park and guide their development to areas which are most appropriate given their conditions and to limit impacts of such, such facilities on adjacent residential properties. Further, as I referenced earlier, states that solar facilities shall be designed and located in such a way to utilize existing lowland wetland areas that are otherwise non-buildable in their current condition and to avoid agricultural and otherwise developable area. I think this, this revision still doesn't get into the wetland, but it does a heck of a lot better job of maintaining developable area on the western side, so it's, it could be feasible that we still maintain an option for whatever the life of the project would be to develop from the western side and then ultimately move easterly if, as an opportunity when the, the term would ultimately expire. Based on discussion and feedback from the Planning Commission at the previous September twelfth meeting and, and careful consideration of the the solar ordinance and the request, staff believes that the revisions are of sufficient significance and substance to meet the threshold required for variance approval and they've addressed the major concerns raised at previous meeting and public hearing from those that, that opted to make their concerns heard at that time. I did enclose the Planning Commission variance guidelines and criteria for approval with the staff's opinion regarding aspects as outlined per consideration of application materials. I did have one, I should say, two contacts since sending notice of the updated plan, one earlier and one today. One requesting clarification of the specific variances being requested in the proposed location and today's contact, just with concerns with the, the request in general and the, and the current location. Given consideration of the requests and submitted revisions, staff believes that the thresholds for practical difficulties have been met and recommends approval of the variances as per submitted revisions revised design number three in front of you. So again, tonight you would have two options and it would not be the typical three that you would have with the discretion of tabling, I don't think we would have the time to, to table again and adequately address that, those aspects, I think it's, it's do or die tonight. So you could approve, approval of one or more of the variances as submitted, or to a lesser degree, that, that's always an option. Although realistically, I don't think the, the applicants would be able to make changes of any substance or significance on the fly with something of this magnitude. But you, you could feasibly approve of, of variance of setback more than the ordinance standard, but less than requested. Or denial of one or more of the variances with findings of fact. I would recommend approval of variance from city ordinance section fifty-two point five six subdivision four A two to reduce five hundred foot setback from adjacent residential property to zero feet with necessary screening per ordinance and according to revised proposal exhibit. I'd recommend approval of variance from city ordinance section fifty-two point five six subdivision four A three to reduce one thousand foot setback from public road according to revised project proposal exhibit. Lastly, I'd also recommend approval of variance of city ordinance or from city ordinance section fifty-two point five six subdivision four A four to reduce the three-quarter mile setback for solar project from another solar project based on revised proposal exhibit. Those would be my updated recommendations, I, I think that they've done a, a fair job to coordinate some revisions based on feedback that was received at, at the earlier meeting. That's, again, probably not an absolutely perfect scenario, but it's pretty rare things are, and this is, I think of substance that was kind of talked about when, when I met with them, you know, from the get-go, that we may entertain some concepts of variances, but they, they had to be something that we, we would kind of meet in the middle on. It's a perfect no, but I, I think they've done a pretty good job of factoring in that the major concerns, I've addressed them pretty well, but we can open for questions and comment.
Thank you, John. It is a public hearing, does anybody want to speak up, stand up to the podium, state your name and address? Say for or against, or what opinion you have?
Good evening, Planning Commission members, I'm Jen Buckantine, here with my husband Bill, and we are the property to the east that's now being encroached upon right up to the line. And I did email a letter to you yesterday morning. I'm not sure if y'all had a chance to read it, John made copies and passed it out as well. So I'm not going to read that word for word, but I'll just kind of summarize it, but essentially, we are opposed to the variance. We're opposed to the plan as currently proposed, we realized that there was a previous hearing and based on the layouts in September, we didn't feel the need to come and attend, we, it would have still been a significant variance from our property line. Probably would have been within two hundred feet of our line, but we didn't feel strong enough about it to attend. Well, anyways, now here we are and it's right up against our line and we are vehemently opposed to that. And as John talked about, the city's ordinance, you know, a couple of the standards in there.
Jen, not to interrupt, but you can use, if you choose to, you can use the document camera there, it'll put anything on screen with the laser there.
Oh, awesome, thank you. Would I still, oh no, I wouldn't be in the mic, I'd still stand here.
You, you could, you could, we could turn the mic on there for you if it's easier, if you prefer to sit.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, all right. So just a couple of things from the ordinance, and John did touch on this, but a couple of the points in your zoning ordinance are to limit the impacts of the facilities on adjacent residential properties, which being up to our property line is not limiting at all, and also avoiding ag and otherwise developable area. Now, I get that with Mr. Ardaloff's property, it's pretty much all ag and mostly developable, so there's probably not a way to avoid that entirely. And I also want to say, we aren't opposed to solar, we, we really aren't. It's, for the most part, a passive use of land and it's not going to bark at you and, you know, complain to you about anything you do, but we're just opposed to it being right up to our line, so I was going to show a map, which I also sent you. Okay, so this map shows our property over here on the east, and then the yellow is the five hundred foot setback from our property line. Essentially, this diagonal line here is a ditch. So I know in September, the proposal, one of the proposals would have went up to that ditch. And that's where we just decided we weren't going to come to the meeting and oppose it. But now with it encroaching on the east side of the ditch and in this field, that is, of course, very close to us, you know, one of our concerns is this group of trees here is going to be completely removed. And so, and then there's also trees along the ditch that would be removed. And really, from our house up in this corner, yes, there's existing screening in place. But the bulk of our line here, there's no screening, there's no trees there, that would impede the view of the solar garden. I did take a picture, hopefully this somewhat shows you. So the foreground of the picture is our property, it's actually our septic system, our mound. And that blue line going across is our property line. And so this field here is where that solar garden would now encroach. And then that group of cheese and trees in the background is what would all be removed. And, and I get that there's a screening requirement in the city ordinance, but that still doesn't, in my opinion, make up for five hundred feet of setback. So, you know, even with in the, further in the background, back here you see another field, that's across the ditch where the solar has been proposed in most of the plans. And, you know, elevation-wise, we're still going to see the solar over there. Not the end of the world. There would be screening implemented, I would imagine, per the ordinance, but it's this close stuff that, that we're opposed to. So, just go through my notes here. Essentially, in, in our mind, the request, does the property owner propose to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted in the ordinance? In our opinion, no. It's not reasonable to ask for a five hundred foot variance to go up against a neighbor's property line. We do feel like the circumstances aren't unique to the property, there's most land in Wade Park is not suitable for a solar garden, most land in Wade Park isn't big enough to meet the setbacks the city has in place. You know, I don't fault the landowner for wanting solar and I'm not opposed to the solar, but maybe just not twenty-five acres of it. Or maybe the setback variance has to be shared with others, with other neighboring landowners. If the variance is granted, will it alter the essential character of the locality? In our opinion, it would greatly alter the character of the locality as viewed from our property. I just wanted to add quickly, you know, if a variance is granted from five hundred feet to zero feet, it seems, you know, questionable, you know, what's the point of having that ordinance? So I think some compromise could be warranted there. And, you know, would confer on this landowner privileges that other landowners aren't afforded in the city, so that's where we're, where we're at, and if you have any other questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come up and comment?
Well, can I ask, excuse me, Jen, can I ask a quick question? So if Ardaloff's were to put screening and birmingham or whatever it would require at that property line, with the trees gone and that berry area anyway, would that still be a problem for you? If we, the view is blocked for you?
Yeah, we would still be opposed to the solar in that area.
Why would that be?
It's a five hundred foot setback, to go zero feet is just.
I understand, I'm asking you a personal question.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, for one thing, the screening isn't going to be immediate, so it will take some time for the screening to grow and be effective. You know, other things I mentioned in my letter is, you know, just the fact of looking out, seeing open space, the flow of wildlife, the removal of the trees that would be taken down, some of those, you know, enormous old trees that would be removed. We would be, you know, sad to see those go.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else would like to come up and comment? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Lori Schultz, my property address is two nine nine four County Road one thirty-seven. My entire property sits within that five hundred foot setback with this new proposal three, that's encroaching within that, which would affect my property aesthetically. Also, I know the city council has spoken or discussed future land development. And as an example, Trisco is wanting to develop residential. If I was a, going to purchase property in the city of Wade Park, if I had an option to purchase a property that wasn't going to visually see a solar farm versus property that has that vision, I would like to go elsewhere. I think for the future development of Wade Park, moving that setback from six hundred to zero, you're doing yourself a disservice on Ardaloff themselves, if they want to develop anything to the west, you have Trisco's going to the north. You have property owners on the east. Yes, you can talk, talk about a berm or a visual component breaking that down, but we live in Minnesota. Vegetation is not there covering trees majority of the year, or winter. I don't think aesthetically is going to be pleasing to anyone involved around in the area. A couple of things I just pulled up. Some studies suggest a distance of at least nine hundred and eighty-four feet, we're talking potentially going down to zero. And that's a setback for residential properties. Aesthetically, I mentioned that already, potential buyers, they may not like to want that, they may not want to open that option for the existing property owners that have acreage. They're not, it's even less likely for development to happen for them. While solar farm, solar panels do not emit radiation, the equipment used for the farms do. Radiation may be harmful to people and wildlife. Solar gives off EMF, electromagnetic fields, not the panels, but the equipment. My question is, as a city council, have you looked at any of the health concerns that might render the, the population in the area? I also read that the Bureau of Land Management found the water used by solar project development could affect local wells. Have we looked into that? Is that, is that what I'm reading, is that accurate statement? Is it a concern for us neighboring properties? Also, do the, the solar panels leak chemicals? So far, research has shown that solar panels may be contaminating water in several ways. First, solar panels may be leaching chemicals into the water supply. This could happen while panels are being installed or when they are in use. It's unknown at this time which is more dangerous. Sometimes waste, the waste contains materials such as lead and can, I'm going to pronounce this wrong, can, can, toxit materials that could get into the soil if the panel cells break while installing. We brought up the vegetation, again, you showed a couple different options there. Trees take a long time to grow, if you go with something that has more of a barrier sooner, you could talk evergreens, pine trees. But again, they're, they have a low root system, they can be affected by veget, by weather. They can be affected by veget, by weather. The solar farm, who's going to handle it? What is their commitment to maintain that berm? That any conditions that come up, that they're going to maintain and keep it up to par? So, that was all I wanted to voice my concerns.
Could I ask you just a couple of questions?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, first question would be, at what point in time do you think a homeowner, a property owner should not be able to develop some of their property to at least gain some income from that? And secondly, do you have any idea how long a solar farm is going to be in existence on a piece of property?
Well, according to the last meeting, 25 to 30 years.
30 years. Do you have any idea how long it's going to take before anybody's going to go out and develop the property in that area?
Nobody knows.
Given the number of houses that are being built in Wade Park on an annual basis? We haven't had enough building growing on a Wade Park. I think three and a half houses, four houses last year. We're doing about three and a half houses over the last 11 years. You know, for me, property owners should have some opportunity to do what they want with property. And I understand the well contamination, but we have farms with wells. Does that contaminate the aquifer? So, we can't protect everybody from everything. But I think what we're trying to do is make the best decision that we can at this point in time, understanding we're maybe going out 30, 35 years, period. Then it has to be gone. So, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of where you're coming from in terms of their opportunity to do something with their land, which has been for sale for about 16 years, and there have been no takers.
On the Ardolph property?
Yes.
Or Trisco's, or both?
So, on the Ardolph property. Trisco also hasn't had any opportunity to develop, even though he has worked with developers for years. He can't get dollar one from a developer to develop his property. And he was here to testify to that at the last hearing. So, I'm just concerned about that, you know, we don't condemn what Ardolph is asking for at this point in time, and I understand that there are different points of view on this whole thing. And there's, they have to have an opportunity to do something with their land as well.
I would agree, though, with the previous person that was up here, going from 500 to zero is unrealistic. And doing that affects my entire acreage. So, that's my point of view.
I would note here, according to the revised plans, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but it does appear that the, the Array Three there was designed specifically to meet that 500-foot threshold from at least your property, as well as the Ardolph property. Is that correct?
And I was going by the original diagram.
Sure.
Anybody else would like to come up and comment, for or against?
My name's Neil Lamper. I was at the last meeting about this. And I just want to reiterate my opposition to it. Like the one person said, I mean, what's the sense of having ordinance is if you're just going to basically throw them out the window? And I understand what you're talking about. A person has a right to do something with their land or whatever. You know, everybody has opinions. And it's my opinion. I mean, when I drive around Saco Rapids or wherever, I don't see solar farms, large solar farms like this in the middle of the city. I mean, they don't, in my opinion, they just don't belong in the city. I mean, I understand that he has a right to do something with his land, but you have to care about the future of the city, too.
Anybody else would like to come, stand up and speak?
Hi, I'm Helen Trisco. And we own about 100 acres in Wade Park. And some of the property, our property abuts Mr. Ardolph's property. And I know how frustrating it can be to try and develop property when it's just, it's near impossible. We're so close to Highway 23, and then you're just a hop, skip, and a jump down the road to I-94. It's just, it seems like, and you go up and down the whole state. It just seems like a no-brainer that someone should, should not want housing development on our property as well as theirs. And I know the infrastructure issue is a very costly one. And so, if knowing what it all takes to do that, I can certainly understand his going in the direction of the solar system. As far as I know, there are, just the site of them is the only problem that I've ever heard anybody quip about. If it helps your utility bills, that sort of thing, that might be more advantageous to everyone. I don't know that there's any noise that's created with them. The sight of them is a little bit agitating, but at the same time, it seems like they're getting, becoming more sensitive to how they look in general. And my son, who is a pilot, was just at my home when I left, and we were talking about solar in general. And just for whatever it's worth to anyone, he was down in Orlando, and he said, oh, yeah, they even had the solar field there, and it was of a Mickey Mouse head. And so, it was very much accepted. So, maybe we should think in terms of doing something creative in that regard. Maybe a fish or something like that. And I'm just trying to say that Mr. Ardolph is trying to work with us all, I think, in trying to make it a workable thing for everybody. And I know how frustrating it can be to try and pay your, your real estate taxes and make everything float when you're on the cusp of retirement. And so, I approve of Mr. Ardolph and the solar system for whatever it's worth. And I don't mean to step on anyone's toes who happens to be living near the, the solar system, but I think everybody has to try and live together, so. Bob is taking kind of a neutral because he knows how frustrated I get with, with trying to make things work. And maybe we should be tapping into the state of Minnesota, who seems to have a little more revenue than a lot of the cities. I don't know. But it's, it's an opportunity to write for a grant, maybe, and maybe get something flowing a little more positively in the way of housing in Wade Park. Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come up and speak, for or against? Yeah, go ahead.
I just, a couple more brief comments. Yeah, I don't disagree with Helen that people definitely should have an opportunity to do some type of a development on their property. However, it's not necessarily the city's job to provide for that in a situation where such extreme variances are needed. And, you know, there is, I see this all the time. There is value in land being used as agriculture. There is value in land being open space until it's ripe for development. And again, I've said it, but I'll just repeat, we're not opposed to solar on the property, like entirely. Just the exact location of where it's proposed now. And that was all I had to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak, or?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Seconded.
Motion and a second, close public hearing? All in favor, saying the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. Public hearing closed at 19:09, or 7:09.
Mr. Chair, I would have a question for Mr. Ardolph. Does the new revised footprint reduce, reduce, increase, or let the number of acres of solar panels stay the same? Slightly smaller, okay, thank you. Slightly smaller.
I think we should look at the setback. I mean, going from 500 foot to zero, that's a lot. Even in commerc, the only thing I know that has a zero setback would be commercial. If it's a heavily commercial property, otherwise, everything has a setback or something.
Hey, I have to admit, I struggle a little bit with the, with the new plan in that we went from a, from a row of trees all along the side and so on and so forth, and a minimal setback. And now, we've moved it back, and we've gone, we're, we're going to remove trees instead of maintaining them for the, for their benefit that they would have had. And we're going to push to a zero lot line. I do struggle with that. And I know we're against, up against time constraints as far as getting anything revised plan. I'm just wondering if some of that, do we know the area behind that ditch that's been added now on the new plan? Is that about, about five acres? Do we know? About five? What was the old setback?
Eric, not to interrupt, if you could come up to the microphone to ensure we're on...
It would help.
And, and, and state your name and business, please.
Yeah, Eric Gillen at Dakota Sun Capital. And I know it's suggested to maybe even out the 500-foot setbacks from the northwest and southwest corner. And just, you know, the high-level math was roughly, if you made them 400, it would, you'd be able to have the same footprint. So, so you'd bring the, the setback from the southwest corner down 100 feet. You'd make it go to the west 100 feet and build out kind of the center strip that's already within the setback, and that would eliminate that five-acre parcel that you just...
That, that's what I was wondering. If you made that, the, the area west of that ditch, if you made it from that outlot toward the south, if you made that straight across, and then, could we, could we absorb that five acres, still make use of it, and, and have a lesser, I mean, a greater setback to the east?
Yep, yep. That was the, yep, the 100 on, 100 on the, both, both the north, like the west, northwest, and the southwest.
Okay.
And then it would open up a lot more on the east part that you're mentioning.
I think it might be much more amicable to, to be, the Buckindines to the east, is all. They, they didn't seem to be opposed to the last plan, which kept it basically to the west of that ditch. If we could somehow accommodate it to, to get back to that, I think we could maybe make it a win-win for everybody here.
Yep, no, I, like, I don't, I don't want to speak for Tom as far as the, the design, but as far as the math goes, if that's extended 100 feet there where the, the cursor is, and then down on the bottom left, you would be able to absorb that far east parcel.
Would there be a 100-foot setback on the north line and on the east line?
It, no, I'm saying instead of 500, it's 400 from the residential property. So, so the, I believe it was Neil and the Schultz family, one in the northwest and one in the southwest. Right now, they have 500-foot setbacks in this design. If we change that to, to 400 instead of 500, then we'd be able to absorb that east block that was added.
Everything behind the ditch.
Yeah.
The north line, would that still have to be zero? Or is you, can you drop that down?
The north, oh, the north line, no, that, I mean, it would be at least 15. It would at least be the 15-foot. You could probably, I think you could, you could go up to 50 if that's, you know, what you think it would take. I don't want to, again, I don't want to speak for Tom, but as far as math goes, I think we'd be able to boost that, the north line, to 50. And then the, the residential on the west and southwest to 400. And then, we could absorb that, the east side of that ditch.
That's good. And then that, that small chunk of tree line that would be taken out could probably stay?
Yep.
That would be good. That would be, I think that would be a lot better. Yeah, if, if we could do that, that'd be great.
That would be good.
I didn't, I didn't sketch, I don't want to speak for you. I, I see the idea.
Then I should, I should ask John, if, if we could come to a different configuration here tonight, it not being officially plotted or mapped?
Not, not seeing...
Could we still approve it?
I, I think if they give a sketch and, and you're specific in the revisions as far as the setbacks, which thankfully, from this case, they, they have those called out on the revised plan, I think we could be, you could do that comfortably. And we would, we would look for a, an updated submittal from them to go to the city council, of course, which I don't think would be...
Right, yeah.
There you go.
This was removed. You'd extend this line over so that instead of the 500-foot residential setback, it's 400.
Can you set closer for the mic?
Just the mic in front of you will work, Eric.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
So, I think what we're talking about here is removing this east of the ditch. And in exchange, you extend this up to this grass line. And then, instead of this residential setback and this residential setback, instead of them being 500, you drop those to 400. And then, the last piece I'm hearing is to be further back from the northern line. Is that correct?
Yeah.
This up here.
So, it's not zero.
So, then we could say, could commit to 50, 50 on that north line. And the line would be straighter than my drawing.
And there would still be a burn around everything?
Yeah, so, we're, we're saying that we would propose either semi-mature trees or a berm wherever there is missing part of the tree line in addition to the screening requirements from the city. So, it would be almost like a double screen.
On the two charts, is that a road that goes down between the center or right down? Yeah, is that a road, or is there a reason why they're not pushed together? Because they were before.
Yeah, that's the eastern road.
Yeah, that's a permanent easement that has to be maintained there. The DNR uses that. We'll be using that.
I'll just reiterate that Mr. Ardolph stated that was a, that road you're referencing was a permanent easement that's in place that the, the DNR will be utilizing.
Can I ask, ask, ask the thoughts of the Buckindines at this point? Is that... Is that something that could be worked with?
Mr. Lamper, if you're gonna, Mr. Lamper, can you come to the mic, please, if you wish to speak? State your name and address, please.
Neil Lamper.
Thank you.
What's the reason that you're even going 50 feet from the, the north there? I mean, nobody, nobody's there but Trisco and Trisco don't care. But then instead, you're gonna go a hundred feet this way. You might as well just leave it that right up against the tree. You have to remember from my house, I can't see, I probably won't be able to see that way back in the corner there. Unless, when you start moving it up a hundred feet, well, then it is gonna compact, impact me much more. Why can't you just keep it over on, on, on the, the south there? Put that, add that in there. You got a hundred feet there, you said. Why, why can't you just put it in there and leave that 50 feet the way it was? Isn't that gonna be essentially the same, same amount of square acres or whatever? I don't see the need, you gotta go a hundred feet. That's bull.
So I think what he's saying is, uh, for Area Two of the array, could you go farther east with some of that?
So Area Two, right?
Yeah, right, in that southeast part.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't there cause of there's, yeah, there's sale to the SNA.
That red line is.
Oh, the red line is the property line.
Yeah, sorry, the red line's the survey there. Um, you could also, you could also go this way too, if you didn't want this to be. You could probably change that to, you know, 50 and 25 or something. If you wanted to extend, you could extend this direction too.
Well, what would you estimate the setback is from Mr. Lamper's property at, with this configuration of adding this hundred feet in? It'd be 400 feet from his?
Yep.
Okay.
And then, but if you, I guess if you did do it down here, you, you, you might be further. That was the one I don't have measured right now, but I think you would be further from his property down here. If you extended that, you know, cut this off.
I th- I think I would agree, um, with Mr. Lamper in this case that, um, given the, on the north side, I, I don't see a realistic benefit for a, a significant setback there because of the grove of trees and, um, there's really nobody on that side that has a concern with it. You know, anyone that would be utilizing those properties would be aware of it from the onset cause it would be there. I, I think, I, I would recommend, if it's coming down a brass tacks, foregoing any, you know, a setback on the northern side since it seems to be not an issue of concern. And utilizing, um, you know, lessening impacts in other areas where there is a try, a desire to minimize, you know, visibility or impacts if it comes down to it. But that's, that's just me.
Wait, question with relation to that though, how close can you set the solar panels to a tree line? To be, to keep them effective?
Um.
Is 50 feet getting marginal?
Yeah, fif- I mean, 50 is probably where you'd want to be, yeah. You can still build them there, you just lose economics on it, which we factored in with our estimates.
Ms. Schultz, again, folks, not to, not to pound from the sand here, but, um, if, if anyone chooses to speak, we really need you to be at the, at the mics so we can get you on record and be sure, be sure the minutes are accurate.
Lori Schultz, is the berm or the aesthetic separator, is that gonna be required from the city on all sides of the solar farm? All, all sides?
The city doesn't necessarily require a berm, the city has a landscaping buffer requirement. A fif- 15 foot width, yes.
On all sides?
Uh, yep, around the entirety of it.
Okay.
That's different from the solar facilities that are in place already, that all those were done prior to the existing ordinance. So there's, you know, basically zero berming, zero landscaping. There's just a fence around the ones that are in place now.
So this would be a fence and a buffer?
Fence, the fence would be up to them, but there would be some sort of buffer. The, the requirement is for a 15 foot wide buffer that has vegetation included. Um, when and if they would come through for the interim use permit application, that's when we'd look for the actual plan that, that shows their screening plan. And that's, that's up for review and consideration. And that gets, um, ultimately approved once everybody's happy with it. And that gets tied in with their, with their approval at that point.
So the fif- the 50 foot setback, is that buffer within that closer than that 50 feet? Or that's the 50 feet, the buffer and then the solar?
The, the, the buffer can be within the setback.
I guess I'm a little bit, uh, perplexed as to why, what the objection is of scratching that a hundred feet out to the, uh, west. I don't see a, a reason to take that out. I think that makes a lot more sense than chopping it up and putting it down to, more toward the south there like they're proposing now.
I got a question, I don't know if it'd be for the Adols or for you, but the original plans that came in Option Two didn't have a easement road going through it. And it didn't have that corner cut off down in the triangle.
Yeah.
So you sold the property after you made the proposal for the original solar farm?
That was a mistake on my end, I didn't have the SNA survey. So this, this one, we actually matched up the SNA survey to know where the delineations, uh, breakdown was. And then the, the easement was just a, a oversight by our designer covering the road in that design.
Okay, cause it just seems like the hardship of not going down in the corner, the southeast corner where it was, is due from the sale or whatever and it's adding more complex to the picture.
I, I could, I, excuse. Uh, Mr. Jansey, I, I was the one that suggested that they start to use some of the land on the east side right there when we went to this new proposal. And the reason I did that is because it wasn't getting used. Second, the gentleman that spoke that, uh, is objecting to it now, has had the opportunity three times to buy that land. He, the reason that little design is there, that special parcel, is because he came to us to buy that land about 10 years ago and then just backed out of the deal, called us back a couple of years later and ghosted us and didn't literally even tell us he didn't want to buy it after we did it again. And actually, even when he called me the other day, I said, do you wanna buy it? Here's the price. He declined. So he's actually had the opportunity to even buy this land and own it rather than be here tonight. And so, um, I think that changes the equation a little bit. Second, you may recall from my prior presentation, if you remember this map, that was part of my first presentation, he was building a berm a hundred feet from my house to put a rock crusher and an asphalt plant away from there. And so that's why I told Dakota, there, I doubt will be any objection from them. Because his act two years ago was that he felt it was okay to put a berm a hundred feet from my house with a rock crusher on the other side. Why would he ever object to seeing a beautifully landscaped berm 350 feet? Because that perspective that, uh, Jen showed you, you gotta remember there's 350 feet from their house to the property line. It looked like that septic system was right between them and there, but there's hundreds of feet between their house and the property line. And so when you, when you look at all of that, I was the one that said it because I felt fair is fair. If this is what you were going to do to me two years ago, I'm being very quiet, being very orderly and building a very nice landscaped, attractive berm with his choice of trees to be there. So that's maybe more to consider. Thank you. I have papers if you'd like to see that.
If you make it quick, then we have to discuss this.
Sure.
Thank you. And I don't wanna get in a, um, back and forth here with Mr. Erdol. But I will say, just two things. When there was discussions about doing a crusher and that, um, that would have required zero variances. So variances are a different animal. Variances are not permitted by right. That's an exception that they're asking for, that nobody else in the city has um, for the setback for a solar garden. And it's really, shouldn't even be on the table as part of the discussion about whether we purchased it or didn't purchase it. But I can assure you, this has nothing to do with the fact that we're sour cause we don't own the land. I get it, we don't own the land and we, but the city still has a 500 foot setback requirement in the ordinance. And so that's what we're just asking you to, if not uphold it entirely, uphold it somewhat. That's what we're asking. Thanks.
We, I'd like to get on with the motion here. What, what is the actual design going to be for us to include in a motion to get this moving forward? Seems to me that a hundred feet added on to the, to the north side toward Mr. Lamper's house seems like the most reasonable option to keep the most people, um, content and move the thing forward. If it can be done that way, uh, we can avoid the zero setback. And, uh, we will have less than 500 feet, but a 400 foot setback is fairly decent setback from Mr. Lamper's house. And I think it's a reasonable compromise. Well, I would certainly like to make a motion to recommend the city for approval. But as I read the motion that's been prepared for us, um, obviously we can't use the reduce the 500 setback to zero feet. Um, so we're gonna need some language in there that we can, um, base our motion on. So I'm really uncomfortable with that at this point, but I would like to do the motion and get it done.
Um, Mr. Chair, or John, do we have to do these variances each individually?
Yes, I would recommend doing so.
It'd be a minimum, not 500, but a minimum of 50 feet. On the, that'd be the shortest one, would we do, reduce it to 50 feet? Instead of zero, it'd be to 50.
Okay.
Be in the north. You know, 50 feet or plus, cause on the east it'd be more by moving it forward. I don't know how to, we're gonna have different setbacks on different sides. And I just.
So if, if we move the adjacent property approximately 50 feet for a setback, and according to project proposal exhibits, um, is that a motion that's acceptable?
I, I would really like to tie it to some sort of a, a sketch if they're able to do something very, very quickly. I, I think that's helpful.
Well, if we need to move it forward and we need to do that tonight, then we need to have a sketch that we can look at to move forward.
Well, that's what I'm asking them to do right now.
Yes, I would.
You may. Yep, thank you.
Well, do we, that, do we want?
I would make a motion to accept, uh, accept the variance from the three-quarter mile setback of different, uh, solar gardens. I would make a motion to approve that variance from that setback.
Which one are you doing?
The three-quarter mile setback.
Three-quarter mile from the.
That one we can do, that's not gonna be changed.
Closest one is over by Bill Clare, so.
Well, I'll second that.
We got a motion, a second, to change the variance setback from three-quarters a mile. From the exhibit. All in favor, same sign. Aye?
Aye.
That's all present.
Okay. Can we also do the, um, motion to recommending the city council to approve the variance from city ordinance 52.56 sub 483 to reduce the thousand-foot setback from public road. According to project proposal exhibit, we find it's a fact that the proposal meets threshold for establishing practical difficulties as referenced on enclosed completed planning commission variance guideline sheet. Number two.
I will, I will second that motion.
Motion, a second, to reduce the thousand-foot setback. All in favor, same, same, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All same, pass with all present.
Okay, so now we're waiting for.
We'll wait for the next.
Design.
Be up in just a second. There you go.
So the, this would be like, uh, the revision to the number three that was in John's packet. So removing all panels here, extending this so that instead of it being a 500 foot setback from Neil's property, it would be a 400 foot setback from Neil's property. Fill in this gap that did not have panels before. But it is beyond the 500 foot residential. And then instead of this residential setback being 500, it's 400, but we cut it there so that it aligns with, so the shape is a little squared off.
But the setback on the north line?
What's that?
The 50 foot setback on the north line?
Um, we would be okay with incorporating a 50 foot setback.
Can you put it on there so it's all?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that 50 foot setback on encroach on your area needed or?
It's a little less, but that's okay hearing everything we've heard tonight.
Okay, now we have a design. This is what you need, John?
This is extremely helpful, yes.
Okay. Well, then I make a motion to recommend that the city council to approve the variance request from city ordinance section 5.52.56 sub 482. Uh, according to the design that was handed, that was created here tonight, to meet the threshold for establishing practical difficulties as referenced on the enclosed planning commission variance guideline sheet. You wanna give that an exhibit number? Pardon? Wanna put some kind of an exhibit number or a title to this thing?
You, you could even say revision.
According to the design that he has.
Revision four.
Revision number four.
As, as established at planning commission meeting.
Add that in there.
Revised, the amendment to the revised plan.
And we'll look towards a formalized copy of this from Dakota Sun for the city council meeting.
I will second that motion.
Oh, go ahead, Don.
We got a, a motion and a second. All in favor, same, same with the changes, same, same, aye?
Aye.
All same sign, pass with all present.
We would expect that this item will go to the city council for the December 4th meeting. There's not a public hearing component with that meeting. That would be for the final review and decision of the city council.
Consideration of the 2023 City Away Park Comprehensive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll toggle over back to the PC. Yeah, I'll toggle over back to the PC. I'm not gonna go through the, the entire plan, um, but just kinda give the overview of it here. Um, mainly, mainly the process rather than the plan itself. For those, um, I would hope most of you are kinda familiar with it. Uh, Mr. Blonigan has been given kind of a crash course here in catching him up. Um, this request is being put forth by city staff for formal review and consideration, a recommendation for the city council regarding the, uh, the new 2023 City of Wade Park Comprehensive Plan. Our current comprehensive plan dates back to 2005, actually, so it's, it's quite outdated at this point. Um, the comprehensive plan of any community serves as a backbone for growth and planning efforts, particularly for areas that have yet to be developed or for areas where consideration of redevelopment opportunities may, may exist. I think we give, um, tonight, uh, our previous item as a example of, you know, where comprehensive plans can really come into play. It's, uh, an intensely, intensively created document which relies on, um, significant public input opportunities and participations of, of residents reflective of the broader community, both the, the resident and the business community. It's intended to be longer term in nature, typically updated every, every five, five to seven years and fully updated or newly established, um, approximately every 10, maybe 12 years. We opted to pursue, uh, a new comprehensive plan in early 2020, uh, with the support of, of the city council to replace the existing dated 2005 comprehensive plan. However, the, the timing for that turned out to be, uh, not so fortuitous with the rapid onset of the, of COVID, um, and the associated aspects of social distancing and limited gathering opportunities, which are, um, really inherently necessary for such a process. Uh, we opted to pause the project until early last year when, um, those concerns had, had receded to a, an acceptable level and let us go forward with the, kind of the processes involved with this. Um, beginning back in early 2020, 22, uh, our consulting planners with SEH Inc. attended and participated in the future search event held, um, in, uh, April of 2022, which brought together dozens of community representatives to consider the future path for the City of Wade Park. This, uh, wasn't solely for the comprehensive plan, but it did serve as, uh, part of the information gathering component for the consulting team. And, uh, we tapped into several residents that were involved with the future search, um, to participate in the planning advisory committee, the PAC, which also had representation from the planning commission, park board, and city council. Um, at the time, our planning commission representative was Sean Blackburn, uh, who has since moved on to the city council. Uh, the PAC met monthly over the course of 2022 and as well as early this year to go through major components, uh, kinda piece by piece of the comprehensive plan process, discussing and guiding such elements as transportation, housing, business, and growth corridors. Um, we wanted the, the plan to be realistic and, and grounded. We wanted to focus on areas where we thought that we could realistically see potential development in the next five to 10 years, um, rather than, than focusing on, you know, areas that are quite a bit further out. We had a, a couple of pop-up events with SEH at, uh, public areas of very businesses with, with their, um, their permission and coordination. Uh, we're thankful for, for their, their help, uh, which allowed the consulting team to solicit additional feedback from people willing to donate a few minutes of their time and, um, play some, um, kinda planning games for a little bit. We held a public open house, uh, presentation discussion of the comprehensive plan. Uh, I believe, uh, many of you were in attendance, uh, on October 2nd. Uh, we did notice it as a public meeting because we, we, uh, did invite all city elected and appointed officials and information regarding the event was pushed to the public via newspaper notice as well as our social media channels. We also went back and, uh, personally invited all the participants, uh, several dozen actually, uh, of the, the future search event as well as, uh, folks that weren't able to participate in that but did indicate interest, uh, were invited. We, uh, took that feedback from the 10, uh, October 2nd meeting and, uh, that was incorporated in the, the final document that was provided to you. Um, we're requesting that the planning commission review and make a formal recommendation to city council regarding, uh, adoption of the new comprehensive plan tonight. Um, this isn't necessarily pressing. Um, we would like to get it done in December if possible, but if you feel that there's something we need to go back and, um, tweak a little more, we can do that. Um, we're not under a, you know, a hard deadline to, to finish this, but we're, we're hoping to wrap it up soon. Uh, under, um, upon the ultimate adoption of the comprehensive plan, city staff will begin to look toward reviewing and updating, uh, zoning ordinances to ensure that they align with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and set the city up for our best, uh, possible success, including proactive and reactive measures, uh, to current changing market conditions regarding development. Uh, the last few years have thrown the planning realm into an absolute tizzy, and we're doing our best to try and, uh, accommodate for market conditions that have rapidly changed and continue to do so on a, um, basis that's almost faster than we can keep up. Um, this will be a, a multi-year process and with, when we do that, we'll have input from the planning commission as well. It's yet to be determined if we're gonna work with, uh, outside consulting with that or if we'll try to tackle it in-house. Both could be considered at this point, but, um, planning commission will be a, a big part of that when we get into the nitty-gritty of the, the zoning ordinances, uh, because those are really the, the bread and butter. The concert, comprehensive plan is kind of the backbone, but the, the zoning ordinance is the, the organs that keep the body going. So I'd recommend, uh, tonight, um, I, I'm comfortable with, with the, the condition of the comprehensive plan. I think they've done a great job of incorporating the, the public input we've received, um, the, the comments from the, the meetings we've had, and, um, I would recommend, um, to the planning commission of making a recommendation of ado, of, of approval and adoption of the, the new comprehensive plan to the city council.
Having read the thing, I would make a motion to accept it.
Do we have to hold a public hearing or then on it?
We did, we did notice it as a public hearing, yes, so you can, you can certainly do that.
I, uh, yes, I wasn't able to go to the October 2nd meeting, and I'm, I, I kinda felt I would probably abstain from the vote tonight just because I haven't read through the whole thing yet. I'm a little uncomfortable with rubber-stapping it. Uh, are you okay with that, or you, would you like me to just?
No, if you.
I'm sure it's fine.
If you're, if you're more comfortable with staying, by all means, that's fine, you know.
I would, I would rather just because I have not had a chance to get through it well enough. I mean, I haven't read it all, so.
Comprehensive plan is a living document. It's gonna change all the time, so.
Yep, yep, it changes. Yep.
Well, you know, for me, I don't, you haven't had a second on that motion yet, right?
Nope.
Uh, second it so we can have a discussion going. Um, my concern as you, as I, as I stated in, in October was, it's really nice to have a plan to work forward to, but sometimes we get a little pie in the sky on this. And I was, like, my particular, uh, criticism, I guess, or concern is that section four, on housing. Um, we aren't experiencing any housing booms going on, and, um, we look at this property that's available for housing and development, things, um, like it's, it's gold and it's, it's gonna always be, gonna be developed right away and we're gonna have all this housing and stuff. And the owners of these, this land who need to do something with it to make some money on it, um, at least to pay the taxes and things, are really left out in the cold, and that really concerns me about that. So I, I, I don't particularly, um, agree with what's going on in section four, um, but I'm comfortable with some of the other things that have been said in the plan, and I was part of the group that, you know, that met and we talked about it. We looked at things and, and I understand that. Uh, but I just, you know, before we go ahead and, and move on the plan, I'd just like to state my criticisms a little bit is on section four, because I think it's really out, it's really out of bounds, given the, the amount of development in housing in Wade Park over the last 11 years, which is almost nothing.
And, and I, I recognize that, you know, comprehensive plans by their nature tend to be somewhat grandiose. That's, that's not uncommon. Uh, and, and I, I've tried to temper, um, elements of, of some of it, and, um, if you, if you think this is pie in the sky, you probably should have seen earlier iterations. Um, but the, the housing specifically reflects, um, basically the will of the people. And, you know, the, the common person, the common resident of Wade Park, you know, doesn't always recognize the, the realities of development and, and, um, making things happen and, and the market and what does and doesn't happen and reactions to that. Uh, what, what we heard from the future search and from comments received time and time again, you know, focused on, um, providing housing opportunities and, and, you know, the, the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, you know, we want it to be grounded, yes, and we want it to, to be functional and not something that's just nice to look at, but we also wanna make sure that it is reflecting the will of the, of the people that, that poured their, their time into it and their thoughts. And, you know, that's where we, we try to meet in the middle and, um, come up with something that, you know, acknowledge the, some of the realities of, of the difficulties of some of these things, but, um, you know, just, just because they're not happening doesn't mean we wanna let go of the, of the goal either.
Where's, where's the new housing that's taken place in the last year and a half, two years? It's been in the Patty Home Association. We don't have any more developed land available right now for contractors to come in and develop more patio homes. You know, that's the word I'm getting from the developers in our area. They've got two lots left, but we aren't gonna have four or five homes built in one year. And as they look around Wade Park, there's nothing left for them to move, actually go in and say, okay, we're gonna develop these houses. And I think those are some of the issues I'm concerned with, and I think the city, uh, can certainly, um, move forward and help get some of those developments going.
Well, I, I, I think you had a property owner that was here tonight that would be more than happy to entertain that idea.
If patio homes are in demand, shouldn't those builders be talking to Triscos?
Right.
Shouldn't those builders be talking to Triscos?
Beats me. All I know is they don't have places to build for what they wanna get done. And Trisco's land is gonna be very expensive to develop, but, um.
That's a different issue.
Other than that, I'm happy to call the question on this and get the vote done.
Uh, I've not done, I haven't even said anything yet. So, a comprehensive plan, Vic, is a guidepost and a goal. It's not something set in stone, and I think it gives our citizens at least, um, a map and a plan that we're not gonna have a gas station that's gonna get built right next to somebody's fancy house, like they have in Houston where they have no ordinances whatsoever. It's crazy down there. Go to Texas and see what it's like to not have a good comprehensive plan. Uh, it's amazing. So, I, I don't, I don't see this as being something where, oh, this is gonna tell us what to do. It's a guidepost, and if there was somebody that was really, really against it, they would be here tonight testifying that here's what's really, really wrong with this plan.
Chris, that's not the tact I'm taking. What I'm saying is we haven't built an awful lot of houses in Wade Park, and the.
It's a different issue.
Developers who are looking to actually build something are telling me they can't find any ready sites for a major development like we've got in Willow Pond or in Willow Creek. They don't have any of those ready sites to get into, and I think that's where the city has to play a role. And I, that's what I would like to see us be talking about in here. The city is gonna be a leader in working with housing and housing development, and we need to go out and look at grants and we have to look at other things to get going. And I understand, I worked really hard on that 2005 plan. It was a pain in the butt. But, um, I'm just making a comment that if we're going to hold that in section four or chapter four, we need to put our boots on the ground and start working with that a little bit, not just have a piece we could have on the, on the shelf and say, this is what we wanna do.
Well, all I can say.
That's my biggest concern.
If, if you've got developers contacting you, you turn around and send them to me. I'll be happy to work with them.
Well, I've done that.
Not, not that I recall.
We have Ardaf and Trisco both here saying, we got land that's right next to city services.
And served.
And, and ready to go. I mean, uh, I saw an ad in the paper with the Triscos, with their, the way they had their property all drawn out. So, for a developer to say there's nothing available on that, I don't agree.
Yeah, there, there are, maybe they're a little bit further out than they, they may prefer, but, you know, there, there's a number of, you know, probably three to four large tracts, you know, Labuda's, um, Trisco's, um, the former Hyatt Hurges' property that, that could all, could all accommodate that sort of thing. They have the cash flow, of course, and that's probably where they're running into concerns right now because the, you know, the actual building market, the expenses of what can you sell for, what can you build for, what can you buy for are all, they're completely out of, out of, they're out of sync right now, so it's, it's a very difficult market. But if, but if somebody was willing to commit the, if somebody came in and was willing to forego everything and said, we wanna put a development, patio homes or single-family homes or what other kind, there's, there's several tracts that could readily accommodate that.
And I also think that the future is different than the past. The 2008, uh, real estate crash was just like the Great Depression. We way overbuilt in the 2000s. We were building 500,000 homes a year higher than we are now, and there's a housing shortage in Minnesota and in almost every state in the country that we don't have the right housing stock for, um, boomers that wanna downsize and for younger families that wanna have a starter home. And so to say, well, we didn't build any homes 10 years ago is not a predictor of what the next 10 years look like. Uh, and this plan at least gives us the guidepost of where that property should be built. It isn't an action step on forcing some developer to do something, but it gives them the roadmap, and we can't, we can't force the private sector to do what they're gonna do. But market forces are going to dictate that. Some of this is gonna happen in a different way than the last 10 years have been.
Now, that's, that's not new. I understand that. I know that every time there's a house in our development that goes on the market, even sometimes before it's built, before the puddings are in, the house is sold. I mean, that's how fast it moves when we've got something ready to go for contractors to say, okay, I got building-ready lots to go. And that's how fast it goes. And we've still built, what, four houses last year? Four? Maybe three?
Biggest demand in the market still is apartments.
Apartments keep going up.
Dorver's gonna put two more up.
So anyway, I already called the question, so.
Well, I kinda interrupted you. I didn't let you call the question yet.
Sorry. That's okay.
That's discussion.
I just needed to say, this was my concern about the plan. Either, I'm not saying it's a bad plan, it's just not, it was my concern about the plan, and, and so that's why I called the question.
Well, I mean, personally, I, I thought there was a fair amount of boilerplate from our consultants in there, but, uh, it was mitigated by, um, there was a lot of public input, and I liked the practical action steps that identified who was doing what and who was responsible for it. Those were concrete things that I think different city departments can take their responsibility for and get done. Uh, it, it's not completely pie in the sky where, hey, somebody's gonna go and do this. There are specific tactics that are listed in the plan and who, who in the city government is responsible for administering it and making it happen, and then prioritizing those, those wants and needs. I mean, that's what we're here for. Everybody wants everything, but, okay, what can we do on a practical level? Uh, so I, I think there is some practical aspects to it.
Five years will tell us.
Well, compared to when I moved to, to Wade Park in 1992, when it was still the St. Cloud township, we are so much better off than we were 30 years ago.
Yes.
I was part of the first comprehensive plan. It was, it was pretty scary.
Is something that's visited annually?
Not necessarily annually. We, we look at it, we'll, we'll look at it probably within three, four, or five years. Um, it, it is something that can be modified or adjusted, especially the, the map component. If there's something that comes in and doesn't necessarily align and it's maybe something that we haven't thought of or haven't counted for, and it's something that we think is good for the community, then we can, you know, we can bend it at the edges. It takes a formal amendment process. We don't do that too often, but it's possible. Um, but after a few years, yeah, we would, we would go through it, and it wouldn't be brand new, but we'd, we'd tinker with it a little bit probably and, and touch it up and try to react to some of those changing conditions as things, um, you know, may change. If things continue on their path, maybe that, that timeline has to tighten up a little bit too. Yeah, that's, you know, the, I think things are different a little bit even now since when we started this early last year. And, you know, we've had to, I think some of those things have been reflected in here even that, you know, to trying to count for it, but you do the best you can, but, um, we're never gonna catch everything. And there's, there's obviously, um, development types or fashions or technologies even that we may not even be aware of now that could be on the horizon in, you know, five or 10 years.
You're gonna say just updating the ordinances and so on and so forth and make sure everything is.
Updating the ordinances is huge.
It's gonna take us a year, a year or two. So.
Well, anyway, I've gotta call the question four times. We need to vote on it. We need to vote on it.
Bit, or what was your motion?
The motion is to call the question. We have a motion. We have a second. So the motion was to accept the plan. I seconded it. Um, we have a discussion. Now I called the question, so it's a matter of voting yes or no.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, saying with the same, aye?
Aye.
Bob abstains, so pass with all present except for Bob.
Thank you all.
Thanks, John.
I thank everybody for all the work that went into this. I know that. That was part of that first discussion back in twenty twenty.
Uh, I, I don't have anything additional for tonight. Um, I, I don't know if we will be having a December meeting or not at this point. I'm not aware of any pending applications, uh, so it's, it's possible we may not. And if I don't, or if we don't, I just wanna thank you all for your work. These last few meetings have been tough, I know. It's not easy for anyone. You're, you're a rock and hard place sometimes. I think you guys did a really good job of working to find some workable middle ground here. But just wanted to thank you all for your, your hard work and as we move into the holidays, if I don't see you for some reason, I probably will, but, you know, have a great holidays and, um, I, I, I hope to see you, but if I don't, enjoy your holidays. It's probably a little early to say that, but.
Happy holidays as well.
I just got notice from the city that my term expired again, so if I wanna, I have to reapply. Now I have, now I have to think again.
No, I, I don't think we, did you formally adjourn us?
Nope. Chair, motion for adjournment.
I would like to just say before we adjourn, I am proud to be with you gentlemen tonight and I hope I do you proud.
Well, thank you. Welcome.
We welcome you.
Welcome. An emotion?
I motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
An emotion, a second for adjourn, all in favor, same saying.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign, pass with all here.
Thank you, everybody.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
And we shall be.